Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth. Our invited guests, family, friends, and our city staff want to welcome you to our Portsmouth City Council meeting tonight. Also want to acknowledge my colleagues here on the dais. And I want to welcome our city manager, Mr. Carter, city attorney, Ms. Lavanda Graham Williams, and our city clerk, Ms. Deborah Clerk. Oh, excuse me. Ms. Deborah White. Sorry, Deborah. Sorry, Ms. White. Right now, I would ask if everyone would please stand for a moment of silence, and following will be the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now ask my colleagues to please note your attendance electronically.
Seven members of the City Council present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
We do have the minutes of a called meeting on January 13, 2025, a called meeting on January 14, 2025, and a regular meeting on January 14, 2025. Do we have a motion and a second to accept the minutes?
Move or adoption.
Please vote electronically.
It's fine, just leave it. The minutes are adopted seven zero.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please read the council speaker rules?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limited up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light here beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the City Council as a body rather than to any particular member of the City Council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We've now come to the agenda item, City Manager's Report. Item 25-30. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we're considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting funding in the amount of $1,500 from the Department of Social Services and appropriating said amount in the FY 2025 Social Services Fund Budget for the Family Partnership Mini Incentive Program.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move or adoption.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Item 25-31. Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting home investment partnerships program income in the amount of $11,600 and appropriating said amount in the FY 2025 Community Planning and Development Program Fund.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Item 25-32. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item?
An ordinance amending and reordaining this code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia by deleting Chapter 11, Erosion and Sediment Control, Excavation, and Chapter 31.2, Storm Water Management, adding a new Chapter 11.1, titled Erosion and Stormwater Management, and making corresponding amendments to Appendix A Fee Schedule for the purpose of complying with the consolidation of erosion and sediment control and stormwater regulations by the State Water Control Board.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Item 25-33. And Madam Clerk, could you please read the resolution we are considering for this item?
A resolution supporting a Vision Zero policy for the City of Portsmouth, Virginia.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move or adoption.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Item 25-34. Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering for this item?
A resolution expressing the concurrence of the City Council of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia with the Inducement Resolution adopted by the Economic Development Authority of Herriko County, Virginia, and approving the issuance of revenue bonds for the benefit of Bonds Akkours Mercy Health, Inc., and Maryview Hospital.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move or adoption.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
That concludes our city manager's report. Now, we are on to the next agenda item, which is new business. Item 25-35, boards and commissions. And do we have any boards and commissions to report this evening?
Mr. Mayor, we do not.
Thank you, sir. The next item, item 25-36, items submitted by council. And this is a four-part, under the items submitted by council, item A, B, C, and D. And the first item, this is Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance, excuse me, we are considering for this item?
An ordinance repealing Division II Use Value Assessment of Certain Real Estate of Article Two of Chapter 35 Taxation of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second?
Move to adopt.
We have a speaker.
And we do have a speaker. I apologize for that. And our first speaker is going to be Mr. Mark Godoldig Yotrowski. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, mayor, council, and other neighbors. I did speak to this when it came around earlier, that is to say, in the previous council. So I want to cover some points, particularly for the benefit of the new members of council. This measure was put forward as a corrective to something that was no longer relevant in the particular case that was the stimulus for the ordinance. But there were some wrongs that had not been righted, and there was some money that went out the door and could go out the door again. So the corrective was worse than the problem, in my view, in that it was a total dismemberment of the opportunity of the city to gain some public benefit from the use of private land. Essentially, there's something, there's an open space regulation, there's an open space statute that the Commonwealth has in effect. And under that statute, the provision of open space access would allow for a tax abatement. And I can see where that would be beneficial, where the city might want to make an arrangement with a property owner for the public to have access to something that has cultural, scenic, historic, or some other value that benefits the public. So an agreement is reached, and it happens. The city does not have to acquire the property, it avoids that expense, but it foregoes a certain amount of revenue from the value, the tax value, of the portion of the property that's affected. Again, I see that there is a potential here for public benefit, and I have faith in our legal department in the city that the city attorney and her direct reports would not negotiate an arrangement that wasn't beneficial to the public. So rather than taking the authority away, I'd like to see it continued and with the due diligence on the part of the city's legal, legal legals. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And I did call for a motion and a second, and I believe we had a motion and a second?
We have a motion, no second.
Okay, so we'll start again. I'll call for a motion and a second on this particular item, item A. Do we have a motion and a second?
Move adoption.
Second.
Okay. And I would ask at this point, before we get into discussion, I would ask the attorney to clarify what a yes or no vote means in this case.
Right. In this case, this is a motion to repeal the open space. So a yes vote would be repealing the open space, a no vote would be to keep it as it is.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
Sorry.
You have two people. Dr. Thomas. Oh, she wants, he has a speaker.
Ms. Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Well, thank you. Sorry, that was noted a little late, but I, just a point of clarification, yes was to repeal, but also for the city attorney, the original intent of this ordinance, or this, that was implied by the open space, was the initial intent for the assessor to have the, the city assessor to have the, I guess, authority overall in determining what the open space value was and to basically kind of govern the whole?
That's true. The assessor is the initial appointee to determine whether an entity fits within the provisions of the statute.
So the repeal would then just put it back into our normal tax, I guess, assessment with our city treasurer? Is that correct?
The repeal would remove this classification from our tax classifications, and so it would no longer be something that could be applicable to any entity moving forward that does not already have an agreement in place.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk.
Does anyone want to make an adjustment?
I'll do.
Okay. So this item fails four to three.
Our next item, item B. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. Resolution request.
A resolution requesting the General Assembly of Virginia to amend the Charter of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia by amending Section 3.11 regarding non-interference in appointments or removals.
Thank you, ma'am. And we do have two registered speakers for this item. Our first speaker is Aaron, is it Cody? Aaron, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you for your service. I am Aaron Cody, and my address is 2908 Tambarke Lane. I ask you to vote no on item 25-36B. The recall process should not be based only on misconduct. Elected officials, and through them, the appointed officials, represent the governed and serve at their consent. If the governed are dissatisfied with their representation, they reserve their power in a representative democracy to change their representation. The current recall process in the city charter is appropriate. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Mr. Godoldig, Mark Godoldig Yotrowski. Mr. Yotrowski, if you would state your name and address, sir. You will have five minutes.
Good evening again, mayor and council. I should have been as clear as my predecessor here. What I'm asking for is a no vote on this item. The language in the resolution makes it more difficult to prevent people on council from interfering with the city manager in his capacity as the executive, chief executive officer of the city. A progressive era reform from back in the latter part of the 19th century tried to rationalize city governance. By that time, the Republican had over 100 years of Democratic, Republican, and I'm speaking with small D's here, small D Democrat, small Republican, form of government, and a lot of the larger cities in the country had very corrupt political organizations. The mayors were usually the leaders of those political organizations, and there was a lot of nepotism, there was a lot of favoritism, and so a bunch of reformers came up with the idea of having a professional manager to serve as the chief executive officers in the cities. Now, this is not universal in this country, but a lot of places, particularly smaller cities, tend to have them. And we benefit from having a highly trained person, somebody who has had formal education in the theory of the job, and many times people with years of experience, as with our current manager. Members of City Council can come up with a variety of ideas that aren't necessarily good for the city as a whole, and the ability of the manager to select the people who report to the manager is being protected in this charter provision. City council does not go to department heads in compliance with the law, and there is a specific penalty for it. What was done was that penalty was watered down to a $100 fine, which is a slap in the wrist and won't stop anybody from doing anything. So I oppose the change, and I will point out that in the 29, this is my 29th year in Portsmouth, nobody has ever been brought up on charges for violation of this provision. So the threat is sort of a veiled threat, but it's important that it be there, and it's important that the people, the Commonwealth's attorney, be mindful of his or her responsibility in this regard. It's also important that the city managers be mindful of where their ground is and defend that ground by seeking legal recourse before being dismissed and then seeking a recourse through the civil suit process. It's bad business when council metals in the executive functions. Council is a policy body. That's my two cents. Thank you very much.
I will now give the floor to our city attorney, Ms. Lavanda Graham Williams. Ma'am, you have the floor.
I just want to make one correction. There has been one council person brought up on the charges. It was Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, although she was not convicted. So I think that was the point of your statement, but I wanted to correct that for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. That concludes our speakers, and so we are in need of a motion and a second?
Move to deny.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Please vote electronically.
Mayor, sorry, can we clarify what we just did there? Thank you.
Right. So the motion was for it to deny this resolution from being adopted, so a vote is a no vote for it to move forward. So a, well, let me correct that. A yes vote means that you do not want the change proposed. A yes vote means you do not want the change proposed.
This item is denied by a vote of seven zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Now we have moved to item C. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution that we are considering for this item?
A resolution requesting the General Assembly of Virginia to amend the Charter of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia by amending Section 12.09 regarding recall of elective officers.
Thank you, ma'am. We do have two speakers for this item, and it is Mr. Aaron Cody again. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address, and after that speaker, Mr. Mark Godoldig Yotrowski. Thank you.
Good evening again. I am still Aaron Cody, and my address is still 2908 Tambarke. Thank you for voting yes and not listening to my previous request to vote no on the denial. I ask you to vote no on item 25-36C, unless, of course, you reverse it, and then I ask you to vote yes to deny. Reducing the penalty for interference will increase the likelihood of interference. The current penalty for interference is appropriate to deter interference, although it isn't as important now since the previous amendment was voted down. The proposed amendments in this and the previous item effectively incentivize a city council member to interfere with the operation of the city under the city manager's authority, knowing one could not be recalled from office for the interference. That's a situation we need to avoid. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Godoldig Yotrowski, sir, you have the floor. State your name and address.
Mayor, council, and other neighbors, we're talking about recall on this item, are we not?
Correct, sir.
So it's similar. The intent of this language was to pile up obstacles to recalling members of council. All right. I'm not going to be corrected by the attorney this time, I think. If my memory of history serves, there have only been two successful recalls in the entire 250-plus years that Portsmouth has existed as a named place in Virginia. The problem is that there was a period of time after the first successful recall when people were circulating recall petitions at the drop of a hat, and that created an impression that recall was easily done. But as the record has shown, it is a steep hill to climb. You need a lot of signatures, and you need to be able to explain to the people as a whole why you are trying to remove somebody from office. The explanations weren't good enough to move people to sign the petitions, and so we've only had two recall elections, and only two that succeeded. I don't believe we need to complicate it. This proceeding does draw from a state statute as a model, but it involves more legal participation. It's virtually impossible to have a successful recall without hiring lawyers to carry it through. I don't believe it should be that way. We, the people who put our elected officials in their seats, should be able to, when there is cause, remove them. It should not be easy. We should not have a minority of the city undoing the decision of a majority. So, you know, there have to be thresholds here. But 9,000 votes, or 9,000 valid signatures in the City of Portsmouth seems to have been a sufficient barrier to the willy-nilly removal of people from council, just because you don't like the last tax increase, just because you don't like the fact that they mispronounced your name, whatever. There has to be some real underlying cause to make it happen. And I believe in the charter as it is, even though I was a participant in a couple of unsuccessful recalls, I believe there are guardrails built in, and it doesn't need to be tinkered with. So I'm asking you to reject this. Whichever way the motion is phrased, vote to reject the change. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to deny.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Please?
Just to be clear, a denial means that this will not move forward, you do not want the change.
Thank you for the clarification, Madam City Attorney. Please vote electronically.
This item passes five to two. Right. The motion to deny is granted. Five to two.
Yes.
Yes, we denied.
The next item, item D. Item D. Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering for this item?
A resolution requesting the General Assembly of Virginia to amend the Charter of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia by adding a new Section 13.05 regarding city council authority to remedy disparities or discrimination in the availability and utilization of minority-owned businesses or women-owned businesses.
We do have one speaker for this item, and it is Mr. Godoldig Yotrowski. If you would come forward, sir, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, one last time, mayor, council, and other neighbors. So I don't want to go down in history as the negative speaker. I am actually in favor of adoption of this resolution. The city has labored diligently, I believe, over a period of many years. The school board led the way. The school board led the way, the city followed suit, and there has been work done by successive councils to try to get on the books meaningful legislation that allows us to make up for the fact that for much of the history of the city of Portsmouth, African-Americans, women, and other former minority groups were denied equal access in the bidding and contracting of services to the city. We have had studies by reputable providers showing where our weaknesses are in terms of making this happen. We are in an era now where people are trying to turn the clock back at the national level, not only the clock, but the calendar, so that things that were set up to try to eliminate past injustices and inequities are being dismantled. So if Portsmouth is willing to plant its flag and try to move forward with this concept of basic equity across the board, I'm for it. One of my pet peeves about life in Portsmouth is that we get sued a lot. We get sued for ridiculous things. And I understand that the U.S. Supreme Court issued a ruling or two last term that casts doubt about the whole concept of making amends, diversity, equity, and inclusion. So we may be bucking the trend. I say it deserves to be bucked. I'm willing to put up some bucks to support the city if somebody doesn't like what we're doing and takes us to court, because I think history is on our side. I think equity and justice are on our side. So I urge you to adopt this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we have Councilman Dodson. Sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm hoping that this vote shows that this council is very much in support of equity and makes a statement to the public about our support for that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Bryant, ma'am, you have the floor.
Yes. Mr. Manager or our city attorney, I'm reading this as this is giving city council authority. How is that different than what we just discussed where in our city manager form of government, the manager is making these decisions? Can you clarify? Certainly, we want to promote equity across our city, and I don't want to cast a vote that is not clear on what we're saying here. Thank you.
This is part of a two-part charter change. You will recall last year, the first part of the charter change, which allowed for the city manager to collect data consistent with the procurement statute already in place in our state code, went forward for pre-filing, and that is already on the floor of the General Assembly and matriculating. And it mirrors in part what this says in the sense of matching the disparity study information that we do every five years or so and other anecdotal information from businesses with respect to disparities. So we do have a bill on the floor that is moving favorably through the body. This was the second part that specifically spoke to city council's ability to remedy. And the remedy portion of that did not make it to pre-filing, and it is here merely for you all to consider based on deferment. What it does do is put in our charter what we already have in place, not only in our city code, but also in our procurement statute, which allows the manager to suggest to council certain actions be taken to remedy disparities. And so this is the second portion of that, which would give the city council permission to then take that action. And it is put in our charter such that no matter who is at the helm of the city council or the management position, that it would be on the books as a part of our foundational guidance for the city. So in short, this sort of mirrors what is already in place, but it is placed in the charter to give it foundational basis. I hope that answers your question. I see the slow shake. Do you have more questions?
I'm going to, we have Councilman Hugel to ask you a question. Okay.
Councilman Hugel, you have the floor, sir.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I intend to vote to reject this. However, we come up with the vote. I appreciate the comments that have been made in favor of putting this in place. The last speaker's comment was Portsmouth should plant a flag. Well, the fact is Portsmouth has planted a flag. We've done two disparity studies. We are in the process of putting MWBE policy in place. There's nothing in this item that prevents us, according to feedback earlier from the city attorney, nothing that prevents us from remedying inequity in our procurement system if and when we put the policy in place that we're in the process of doing. We don't need a charter change to do that. We just need the gumption to do it. Now, fact is, one of the reasons I'm against the charter change as it was written, I provided comments to the Legislative Committee when they were building out this charter change. And one of my comments was we have only addressed in the charter change the scope of the disparity study, which focused on a portion of folks who are excluded or potentially excluded from being treated fairly, but we haven't included everybody. So for instance, disabled veterans are excluded from this. Why? Well, because we didn't include in our disparity study disabled veterans as a group that's potentially being mistreated in the procurement policy. So why would we go to the trouble to change our charter in a flawed way and not go figure out by implementing the policy that we're in the process of implementing and figure out whether that's really going to work? And then expand our disparity study into the places where we didn't go so we're inclusive of all folks that are being excluded from fair treatment? And then if we need to fix the charter, we can fix the charter any old time we want to. I mean, if we want to plant a flag, we're planting a flag. And all it's going to take is for the manager and city council to step up and do the right thing when we're doing procurement. We don't need a charter change to do that. I plan to vote to reject, however we word that in the motion.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Moody, sir, you have the floor.
When this was discussed last time, I asked, what is the remedy? And that's, to me, that's carte blanche. What, nobody could really say what that remedy would be. It's not defined. Until it's defined, I'm going to vote no as well, because, I mean, is the remedy $10? $10,000? I think it was discussed, well, depends on the situation. Well, that's still open-ended. Until I see the parameters for that, I don't think councils should have a blank check when it comes to dispensing a remedy. Is the, you know, what connection does the person seeking the remedy have for council? Are they donors? Or are they distant relatives? You just don't know. So I'm going to vote no under those circumstances that remedy hasn't been defined.
Hold on. Attorney Graham Williams, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor. I just want to be clear that this provision does not, it does not relate to the Sugar Hill remedy discussion. This provision is about very narrowly tailored remedy of our disparities with minority-owned business or women-owned entities in our procurement process solely. I don't think it takes away from Vice Mayor's comment. We don't have any remedies outlined in this. It would give you the authority to figure that out, but I want to be very clear, this is not an extenuation of the task force discussion.
Well, I wasn't really referring to the Sugar Hill situation, but it still is not clearly defined.
Councilman Tillage, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I plan on voting to support this item. And to the points that were made by my colleagues, we have to take a stand on equity and inclusion, especially in today's world. We've seen over the last couple of days, last couple of, what has felt probably as a year, has been seven days, of executive orders on the national level where policies have been reversed because they were not codified. And so with that being said, it allows, by just trusting policy allows anybody to easily change a policy. This will cement into the charter how the city stands and how they should operate, expressly when dealing with minority-owned and women-owned businesses. We saw the disparity study. You know, we say that we don't want to offer a blank check. However, the authority to remedy disparities is not offering a blank check. Offering a blank check is basically having, the city has done multiple disparity studies over the years and have set on those. That is allowing for blank checks to be written and for further disparities to continue to occur in the city of Portsmouth. And so due to the inactions that have led us to this point of addressing disparities, I think it is very imperative that we do address this and let people know that Portsmouth stands in support of minority and women-owned businesses and that we're not going to allow disparity to continue to flourish in this city and that we are going to be ready at all times to stand at arm to remedy anything that does come up when it does appear. And so that's all this item is stating, is that it gives us the power to address when that time does come, the option to offer a remedy. I think it's unfair to put a cap on what we believe a penalty should be, because for so long disparities have existed and we've just sat here. And so with that being said, I'm going to just yield and say that I will be supporting this.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in agreement with Councilman Tillage here in support of adoption of this resolution. One of the things I circled here, because we keep saying the word remedy, is, you know, just a clear understanding, it's not a blank check. It doesn't give us blank rights to just go wild and do whatever. It's saying that, yes, we are setting the precedence and the priority in our charter, not just policy, to recover or right to prevent and obtain redress for a wrong. And we know that we have a wrong in the city. We've had two disparity studies. We were just presented with additional context from our last disparity study from 2023, which really outlined some of the percentages here. WBE firms basically were utilized at 5.96%. African-American firms, 1.43%, whereas you had an overall utilization of 8.21% when MWB firms were available at 20.36%. So it's not that they weren't even available, it's that they were not utilized. So we know we have a problem. We know we have a commitment, I believe amongst all of us, to implement an NWB program, but why not provide additional foundation in our charter that when we see a problem, we do a problem and we fix a problem? And to Councilman Hugel's point, you're right, there are other groups that have, that need to be looked at. But I always say, you know, perfection is the enemy of good. We have identified these groups that we do need to remedy and have that solution to go forth. So I'm going to support this, the adoption of this resolution for that reason, and I encourage my other council members to do the same. Thank you.
Councilwoman Bryant, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Can we talk a little bit about the logistics of this charter change, given that the General Assembly is in session? If we do vote for this, where does that put us on a timeline?
It would not, we have already.
Hold on. Hold on. Madam City Attorney, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I do get on him about giving the floor, so I stand corrected. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilwoman Bryant. We have already passed the deadline for any new legislation to reach the floor, so this would not happen in this session. It is a short session. It's a 45-day session. It will end in mid-February, and crossover happens, I think, in the next week. So this would just be a support as we develop our next legislative packet in the next coming session, but it would not move forward in any way for this session. What is on the floor is the charter change that gave the manager the ability to collect the data and utilize that data to create the very programming that you all are talking about, to remedy disparities in our procurement process. And so that's where we are at this point. And I do want to make one more correction. I'm sorry, ma'am.
Go ahead, ma'am.
There is a statute, so it's not just policy. Many of you had mentioned that this was just a statute. There is, the policy, there is a statute on our books that allow the manager to do to remedy disparities, but it does not hold the same weight as a charter, as a foundational piece. But I don't want anyone to think that we just only have it in a policy form. We do have that statute.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Bryant, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to be very clear, because this is a very important issue. I'm hearing that we have tools in place currently that this resolution would not go into effect this session, and that my feeling is that, given this is a holdover from November before this council, there's continued opportunity to discuss this when we come around to the next session. My feeling is that charter changes are a big deal, for lack of a more elegant word. And so I would like to be cautious in changing the city charter and just want to vocalize that is my thought process right now. So if this resolution does not carry forward tonight, it's something we as a council can continue to discuss, and there are currently other tools in place that we are using to remedy these issues. Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Thomas, you have the floor.
Okay, so Councilwoman Bryant, to go along. So if it's not with this current legislative package, we were voting in hopes that, before we found out that the legislative package submission was closed, should we, it was priorly deferred. Can it be deferred again or for further discussion?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. It can be deferred. If, if.
I just wanted to know what our options were.
If that is the pleasure of council to defer the matter into a later date, we absolutely, it is within our authority to do so.
Well, I'm prepared to vote on it. I just wanted to put that out. Thank you. I'm prepared to vote yes on it.
Do you want to say that?
Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor.
I think you have asked for the floor, so you have the floor, ma'am, to clarify the position on how we may wish to proceed.
Members of council, if it's your wish to defer this item, it's recommended that it be deferred into your second meeting in November, which would be when you would adopt your legislative package. And between now and then, you would have additional time for discussion, whether it's to implement additional items that Councilman Hugel has mentioned. You could tweak this. You could tweak this even more within your process. I mean, you're very free to, you know, adopt or deny it tonight, but you have additional time without totally killing it to just defer it to your second meeting in November.
I would like to move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion on this item? Please vote electronically.
This item is denied for three.
That, that concludes our items submitted by council. Are there any other items to be submitted by council? Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Couple of shout-outs. I visited Portsmouth Catholic Regional School yesterday morning. They were celebrating their Community Service Day, so I want to shout out the teachers, the students, the students in particular. Every classroom was engaged in a community service project. Those projects range from goodie bags for our, our unhoused, thank you notes for our police officers. So a wide range of, of things that, that the kids at Portsmouth Catholic School were, were engaged in yesterday that were all intended to, to send smiles out into the community. So, so thanks to them for, for spending the day doing that. And then secondly, I want to shout out the American Legion Post 190. A few of us had the opportunity to celebrate some public safety folks on Sunday afternoon. So our Police Officer of the Year, our Firefighter of the Year, our EMT of the Year, the State Patrol, State Policeman of the Year, and the Sheriff Deputy of the Year were all recognized in that, that ceremony, and every one of those folks had great stories told about the service that they have contributed to our community. So well done to American Legion Post 190 and congratulations to those awardees. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Last Monday, as you all know, the nation, we celebrated Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And with that being said, several council members and myself, we attended the Church and Community in Action MLK Breakfast, as well as the NAACP's MLK Celebration, as well as the American Legion Post 190's luncheon that they had commemorating the contributions that MLK has made to the nation and to the world. And so it was, it was great to be able to recognize Martin Luther King, as well as how the strides that America has made since then. We continue to press forward even today, but I just want to, you know, make sure that we, as a, as a nation, that we continue to hold, hold steadfast and continue to push. We've been here before and we, we will make it through. And so, you know, as we, we reflect on where we are today, just continue to think about Martin Luther King and all the people that have come before us. With that being said, Mr. Manager, with all that's come down from DC in the last couple of days, especially today, in regards to the executive order to freeze federal funding, if you could provide City Council with a report back on how this impacts the city's current budget, as well as its cash flow. As you know, we just had a presentation today that really went into great detail about the amount of projects we have that are in desperate need of repair with our water system, our sewage. Last week, we had a presentation about our roads and bridges, and a lot of that money that we get to fund those projects are federal dollars. And so with, out those federal dollars, it's kind of hard for localities to be able to meet the needs of its citizens, the basic need of clean water. Today, we had a presentation that showed a need of 1.5 billion, that is B with a billion dollars, of infrastructure needs that this city needs for water and sewage. And we are relying heavily on dollars from the federal government. And just to name a couple of different programs that the federal government contributes to cities, our CBDG funds, our EPA grants, which a lot of that is our clean water and clean air funds, our infrastructure, our roads, our bridges, as well as public health, money that goes to our Health Department. In addition to transportation, the city of Portsmouth was just awarded a $19 million grant a couple of years ago for the Innovation District, the RAGE grant. That's a federal grant that we do not have, and so that money has been frozen. In addition to that, we talk about education. We're talking about free and reduced lunch for our students, the impact that that's going to have on our school division. And then also today, listening to our engineer and our Deputy Director of Public Utilities, another large funding mechanism is the BRIC grant. That is how we're kind of relying on getting our pump stations fixed, on how we're relying on getting our sewage systems fixed. That is all frozen. And so, Mr. Manager, if you could please report, in a, report back to council of all of the impacts that a federal freeze will have on our locality, because, you know, this may last 90 days and may last, we don't know how long it's going to last. We don't know if it'll be blocked, but I think it's very imperative that the city of Portsmouth have a response plan to how we can address these things over the next four years if we do not have federal funding.
Before I turn, give you the floor, Mr. City Manager, we do have an update to the status of those decisions, and Madam Attorney, would you please address those?
I did want to let council know that early this morning, all of the appointees got together and talked about just that very thing. We've been tracking it very closely. We've got some data from OMB on some interpretations of what that memo means, and there have been many cases filed throughout the country, one of which in the District of Columbia Federal Court, there's a stay that was issued until, just this evening, maybe at 5:00, that stays the memo until the 3rd of February. So that buys us a little bit of time, but we had already started that process. I know we had looked at some grants and had already sent some notices out that they weren't going to be issuing payments, but we, we will provide that information for sure. I just want to give an update that we do have a window of opportunity and that we do have some foundational legal precedents that we can lean on should the city need to proceed that way. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And now, Manager Carter, you have the floor.
Well, based on what my city attorney has just said, all I'm going to say is what she said. All right? Thank you.
Thank you all, and it is imperative that we all pay attention to those matters because they do impact our city and our citizens, and thank you all for your engagement to that effect.
I just want to make sure that Mr. Carter is going to provide the data, though, of, and that not the city attorney's office.
Okay, so now she's passing it back. No, I didn't obligate you. I'll make sure that you get the data. Thank you.
Thank you both for passing it back and forth. I do want to share with everyone, the 33rd Annual Echoes of Joy Resources Event produced by the Department of Parks and Recreation took place this past Saturday, January 25th, at the neighborhood facility on Elm Avenue. This event is designed to benefit the homeless and disadvantaged population in the area, in the area. Approximately 500 individuals were fed, and many received health screenings, free haircuts, and bag lunches to go. In addition to the food and health services, guests had access to social services, counseling, and clothing at the event. Attendees were also able to enjoy the entertainment and social fellowship throughout the event. I had the pleasure and the opportunity of visiting the event, and one thing I want to convey to everybody out there in the audience, Portsmouth cares about our family, and it was demonstrated at that event. If you were able to show up, I think everyone left there better off than when they opened or came through the door, and we will continue to offer those types of events and services to make sure that no one in our community and our family is left unloved or forgotten. Thank you. Councilwoman Bryant, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to preemptively thank the city manager and the staff tomorrow for the Rock the Block that is scheduled for Port Norfolk. If you live in that neighborhood, look for them tomorrow. I have personally done the last two Rock the Blocks, and they are such an experience. It's such an incredible moment to witness so many people descend on a neighborhood and really give it some love, and it creates wonderful energy. If you're able to volunteer, I'm sure Mr. Carter would be happy to have you. Picking up litter is something that those of us that are not working on city staff can do, and I look forward to seeing Port Norfolk beautified. Thank you for doing that, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bryant. Now, I would like to share something, and this is the best part of my job, bar none, well, one of the best parts, about one of our valued employees here in the city of Portsmouth. On behalf of the, well, dear friend of golf, which I am a friend of golf, on behalf of the Officers Board of Directors, members and associates of the Middle Atlantic Section of the Professional Golfers Association of America, I am pleased to inform you that Adam Reeland, PGA, the Director of Golf at Bydowee Golf Course, has been named the recipient of the section's 2024 PGA Golf Professional Award of the Year. This award is presented annually to a PGA professional in the Middle Atlantic region who has distinguished themselves through excellence in promotion of the game of golf, leadership, and service. Adam's peers elected and selected him as the recipient of this award in recognition of his dedication, persistence, and tireless commitment to golf. We are extremely grateful and thankful for Adam's work benefiting the section, and we want to share the good news with you. He will be presented this award at their annual event banquet at Landstown Resort and Spa in Leesburg, Virginia, on the evening of March 2nd, 2025. This will be a special occasion to recognize our valued employee, Mr. Adam Reeland. To him, we give him much love and congratulations, and on behalf of a grateful city and city council, we'll give him a hand at this time. And I would ask that the manager please convey our sentiments to Mr. Reeland.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our items submitted by council. We will move on to our agenda, our next agenda item, which will be pending items. And Mr. Carter, do you have any pending items, sir?
Yes, sir. You provided a report back on some items that transpired in the last council meeting. One was which you talked about, the Truck Weight Enforcement Unit. So there's some information in there about, you know, how we've, how we're progressing with that and what's necessary if we want to really stand that unit back up again. Also, you should have received sometime this week, some information about talking points for those that plan to go to Richmond on Thursday. And finally, there was a couple of citizens that came, talked about some issues with, one was ticketing, and another one was a possible harassment. We have completed the investigations on those and, and to make sure that you're aware, all procedures have been followed completely. For the school zone, there was some issues with the actual timing of that, but we've corrected that and contacted the citizen so that, just want to let you know that both of those issues have been closed. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Now we're moving on to the next item on the agenda, which are not, which is non-agenda speakers, item 25-38. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you'll notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. Our remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body, rather than to any particular member of city council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe the basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our first speaker tonight is Mr. Robert Turner. Mr. Turner, if you're here, if you will come forward, state your name and address, sir. You will have five minutes.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name is Robert Turner. I live at 4313 Templar Drive, and I'm also a retired fire captain for the city of Portsmouth. I come here today to bring attention to the citizens of Portsmouth and to this administration as well. For years now, we keep getting told that we can't get a raise anymore until retirement fund grows to over 80% funded, which is not going to happen unless you increase funding. The city projected that they got a casino, it would solve a lot of money issues. It's my understanding you got almost 24 million last year, and you're giving over 80% of that to the school system. Their budget continues to grow while enrollment shrinks, it costs per student what it used to cost to go to college. We've not had a raise in over 11 years, and I told today it was 14. My tact for prayer, I can't believe I keep getting the same W-2 from the city. I've added a little chart to show what happens to our salary just in the past 10 years, which you should have in front of you. Real estate tax has gone up 33%. Coffee gas, 44. Water and sewage, 30. Hampton Road sanitation, 147%. Car and home insurance, 35%. This doesn't take into consideration the 100% increase in everyday groceries and vehicle fuel and astronomical medical costs. I'll attach an inflation chart to show how much cost of living has increased, 30% in the last 10 years, 77.3% since I retired. Back in the 80s, the city sent all employees a small booklet telling us all the benefits of being a city employee, and in the back showed how to calculate what your retirement benefit would be, and it also said you would get a 2% cost of living each year. Unfortunately, I'm still trying to find someone who still has that booklet that was issued by the city. I have a friend that would really like to see that in writing. When I was hired by the city when we annexed Norfolk County, which you know is churchland, in December of 1967, I risked my life for $1.78 an hour back in those days, and never thought the city would turn their backs on me after I retired. Thanks for listening. If you have any questions for me, my phone and email is attached. That goes for the press as well. One last note, a fire captain today makes almost 300% more money than when I retired, and as of yet, I have not reached what I made 31 years ago. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. GW Thompson. Sir, if you will come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Glover, City Councilmember, City Manager. My name is GW Thompson. I reside at 4065 Windy Brow Drive here in Portsmouth. I would like the members of Virginia Organizing, a group in which I'm a member, Zion Baptist Church members, and others who are here to advocate for our homeless population to please stand. We also have a few of our homeless brothers with us tonight. Thank you. You may be seated. Virginia Organizing is a nonprofit, nonpartisan political action committee that has advocated for many issues such as mindfulness in our schools, voting rights. Currently, we are advocating for adequate housing and shelter for the most vulnerable in our city. My church, Zion Baptist, under the leadership of Dr. Kevin E. Turner, in partnership with Ebenezer Baptist and Dr. Leroy Hill, provide breakfast for the homeless three days a week. I serve as one of the volunteers for this ministry. First, I am most thankful for the service that the nonprofit Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless, PVH, provides under the able leadership of Dr. Washington, who has been recognized for her efforts in addressing the needs of the homeless community. The shelter that PVH provides in partnership with Sheriff Michael Moore has filled the void since the rolling shelter program supported by churches in our community was stopped as a result of the COVID epidemic. I would also like to thank Chief Jenkins for taking time to explain the role of the police in addressing the issues of the homeless. Prior to the pandemic, when there was inclement weather Prior to the pandemic, when there was inclement weather such as snow, a drastic drop in temperature or a storm, the city would open a shelter to house the homeless during those times. The pandemic impacted a lot of services due to health concerns. Dr. Washington informed me last year, the city's emergency operations center in partnership with PVH created a plan to provide temporary shelter when temperatures dropped below a certain point. These clients would be housed in PVH's shelter overnight. She further stated that the police and fire department would be responsible for transporting these individuals to the shelter. I was told that if an unhoused person wanted shelter, they could call the non-emergency number, and a police officer or fire and rescue personnel would pick them up and transport them to the shelter. I called this number last year and most recently last week, and they were unaware of this procedure. They referred me to the chief of police. I talked to him this morning, and he informed me that plan was in effect during COVID, but is no longer operational. Like any bureaucracy, there can be a breakdown in the information flow. Virginia Organizing met with the city manager, which was a very productive meeting, and one of the suggestions he made was, if there is a problem, try and generate a solution which will help his team address the issue. One suggestion would be to employ a systems engineer who could look at all services offered by the city and generate a flow chart that can be used to ensure that the correct information is being imparted across agencies. This will be a great benefit to the citizens of our city. Several homeless people brought to my attention the fact that there was not an emergency shelter available during inclement weather, such as the brutally cold weather that we all experienced last week. One person informed me that the Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless Shelter was at capacity. I cannot verify this. I did place a call to Dr. Washington to check this out. In past years prior to the pandemic, there would be a public service announcement in the media to inform the public of emergency shelter locations. City council, you are to be commended for your efforts in partnering with Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless and other community partners in the initiative to build a permanent shelter for the homeless. However, people are in need now of somewhere where people can be sheltered during this time that has the capacity. I'm here to ask, until the permanent shelter is built, can the city establish a designated emergency shelter plan that will have capacity to house the unsheltered in event of weather event? Can this plan be publicized through the media or other city agencies and other entities serving the homeless population so this information will be made available to our homeless brothers and sisters? Can the city establish warming stations in the winter and cooling stations in the summer? I was informed by the homeless that unofficially the library and fast food restaurants serve this purpose. Publicizing this information will be a benefit to all those who serve and encounter our homeless brothers and sisters. And I leave you with this quote, "The time is always right to do what is right," by Martin Luther King. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Sir, thank you so much for coming to speak and the people that you brought to support. I do have a question. This is more so, I guess, just bring some of the points you brought up. I wanted to ask the city manager, who in our city department is kind of responsible for the overall plan for homeless housing, monitoring, I guess, getting the word out, what you refer to as an emergency shelter plan to house the homeless during weather? Like, where does that fall under in our city's structure?
City manager, Carter, you have the floor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Thomas, we don't have someone that is responsible in general. Now, during emergency or inclement times, our emergency management director is responsible for coordinating those efforts, and they coordinate those efforts through Ms. Washington and her group, but as far as other times, no, there's not a designated person in the city that does this on a daily basis.
Okay, so, I guess Dr. Washington does great work with the Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless organization. I guess maybe that just kind of brings open a gap, maybe, that maybe we can look into for the future to kind of have a plan, because maybe we have a plan and it's coordinated, but to your point, it's not known, it's not consistent, or something like that. I'm not sure. I'm just going off the information presented here, but something I think we should look into, especially as we try to address the homeless population in our city.
Yes, ma'am. We'll take this as a report back and get some information to the community and to the council.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Aaron Cody. Mr. Cody, sir, if you will come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening. I'm Aaron Cody. I recently moved. No, I'm just kidding. Still at 2908 Tambar Lane. Last year, the governor signed a law permitting increased salary caps for city council members. The Portsmouth City Council wasted no time in acting on this new authority to benefit you, the people's elected representatives. In 2021, the governor signed a law permitting the use of ranked choice voting in city council elections. However, the Portsmouth City Council has not yet acted on this authority to benefit us, the people. Ranked choice voting benefits us because it can be a solution to a problem currently affecting this council. The problem is, no one on city council was elected with the majority of the votes cast. Our mayor was reelected with just under 50% of the votes. A majority is over 50%. Our three newly-elected city council members received less than 16%. The three other members were elected with less than 19%. A majority for a three-seat election is over 25%. The problem is not your fault. The current method of voting is to blame. Now, if there was no other method, I would grudgingly accept being governed by representatives who do not have a quantified majority of support from our community. However, there is another method, ranked choice voting. Ranked choice voting benefits we, the people, because it supports the election of candidates who receive a majority of the votes. To increase the public's awareness of ranked choice voting, I will be streaming the next must-see TV from this lectern here in the Portsmouth City Council chambers. New episodes will drop at future city council meetings. The next exciting episode is an introduction to ranked choice voting. I have three asks. One, if those hearing this support a representative democracy in which elected representatives govern with the consent of the majority of the governed who voted, please keep an open mind as I present these ranked choice voting episodes. Two, if civic league presidents are interested in having me present ranked choice voting at a meeting, please let me know. And three, most important, I ask you, the Portsmouth City Council, to act on your authority by discussing ranked choice voting for city council elections at public work sessions and then voting on a motion to adopt ranked choice voting for city council elections. I know adopting ranked choice voting for city council elections is not the most important issue facing Portsmouth residents and the Portsmouth City Council. I also know governing without the consent of the majority of the governed makes every important issue harder to address. The city council speaker's statement recommends speakers limit remarks to only matters the city council can influence. I speak about ranked choice voting for Portsmouth City Council elections, which is a matter only the city council can decide. If anyone hearing this has any questions or comments for me, I will be available after each presentation. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Mr. Dow Redman. Mr. Redman, if you will come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes. Okay. Our next speaker, Mr. James Seagraves. Mr. Seagraves, if you will come forward, state your name and address, sir. You will have five minutes.
Thank you, council members. My name is Jim Seagraves, resident at 4716 Thornwood Street here in Portsmouth. Retired civil engineer, retired professional engineer, former director of maintenance for various local government facilities, and public works director for some large federal facilities. My topic for you is the personal difficulties I have conversing or connecting with City Hall. I was driving to the library on multiple days. I saw a large pond of water next to the Churchland Fire Station and the driveway to the treasurer's office and the Branch Library. It hadn't rained in a long time, but, you know, they could have tested a hydrant that was there, so I let it go. But after multiple trips, I saw the large pond of water still there, still no rain. I saw many city vehicles of different departments come and go through the pond of water. With my background, finally, after a few trips to the library to turn in some books, I pulled into the parking lot, got out of the car, and went over to look at it, and from my experience, I could see water coming out near the curb line. Now, that's not the issue, as far as I'm concerned, that I want to address. But what I did was I went to my phone in the car. I called 311. I explained to the person on duty that I wanted to report a water line break and the location. They said at that time, I had to talk to the utilities department. I had to speak to them. They were very polite and professional. They forwarded me to the utility department. The connection was terrible. I couldn't hear the person. I called back 311 after the phone call was broken off. I spoke to a person again, maybe not the same one. I explained to the lady the difficulty talking through the connection to the utility department and asked, please, for her to take this information down. She was adamant, polite, that I had to talk to the utility department. She connected to me to them again. The connection was bad. The connection was broken off. I said, well, I'm going to go and volunteer at Oasis today, which I do several times a week, and I'm going to drive by the Public Utilities Operations Center, so I'll just go in there to the receptionist and explain it to them face to face. I did that, but post 9/11, it's controlled access, and I certainly couldn't figure out or had a key card to get by the gated operation to go in and speak to someone. I went back to the car, called the main Public Utilities Department phone number. I got a litany of recorded voices on how I might deal with my water and sewage utility bill, but never a number related to other. Finally, I saw that there was a number for after emergency water line breaks. I called that. It rang a number of times. I think it probably rolled over to the receptionist in the main office at Public Utilities. And I finally talked to them. I gave them the information. Handful of days later, a crew was out to mark the utilities, and then a few days later, the water line was fixed. To me, I should have been just able to call 311, report it to them, and been done with it. A number of engineers retirees that I have lunch with regularly often say they would have given up after the first phone call. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And before you leave this evening, Mr. Seagraves, if you would stand back and we can get some more information so that we can hopefully alleviate that challenge for you or any other citizen in the future. Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Vic Nichols. Oh, I'm sorry. Miss, Miss, Vic Nichols? Ma'am, if you would state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
First, the handicapped entrance to this building is not lit at all. It's completely dark. It's very dangerous. One, why hasn't Portsmouth checked with other cities to see if chemicals or other materials could be ordered in bulk and saving dollars that way? Virginia Beach was open to paying for the ability to use and work with Chesapeake on their new Fire and Police Center Academy, said it would save dollars and it would get use out of it. Number two, Portsmouth does not have a stormwater committee, and you desperately need one. Three, your budget and your ship definitely need some graphs here. This is not friendly at all to the vast majority of citizens. Chesapeake modified theirs, and it was a lot easier for the people to understand where the funds are going, where they're coming from, and everything else. Much better. Four, where's the city retreat information? Now, this is Chesapeake's. Virginia Beach's was actually advertised on YouTube. Five, there's an issue about a synopsis that's been given to council in the past. I saw a copy of it and basically demanded it because it's not a request. Those documents should be FOIA opened. I am demanding that they are placed out in the public domain unless you have specific FOIA exemptions to part, not all of that information. The 2024 edition of this book is out. This lawyer is the one who pretty much writes a lot of the stuff that goes on with FOIA, and he's very good, and he's got it all together. This is a 2016 book. The 2024 book is out there. 18.2-308.03 Fees for Concealed Handgun Permits. The local law enforcement agency conducting the background investigation may charge a fee not to exceed $35 to cover the cost of investigating, of conducting an investigation pursuant to this article. Chesapeake dropped the fee to $25 because I proved they were using it as a slush fund illegally. Virginia Beach is looking into it. If you do not have proof that it takes $35 to accomplish that investigation, I guarantee you can't, then does a lawsuit that the citizens have to pay for when the city is operating illegally in defiance of state law need to happen to compel the city to obey the law? I know tons of people that have a lot of guns, but they're not shooting or brandishing their firearms. You don't have a gun violence problem. You have a heart and family problem. The reason why gun violence doesn't go down here is because it's not the gun that's the problem. I would like to congratulate Portsmouth citizens, because you know what? I've seen more here and more people come up and care about this city than I have quite a few nights in Virginia Beach, Chesapeake, and Suffolk on quite a few nights. I think that's something y'all should be proud of, and maybe you can hit up Bobby Dyer and Rick West when you see them again with that. With ranked choice voting, it dumps people's votes, because if your vote is exhausted, you no longer count, and it violates the one-person, one-vote rule that we have had forever. I would also suggest another book that I think would be very useful for the council, and it was Dave Ress, if you remember him. He was a report writer over in the Newport News section. It's Municipal Accountability in the American Age of Reform, The Gadfly at the Counter, 1870 to 1921. Will be an excellent read. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And our next speaker is Mr. Merle Rutledge. Mr. Rutledge, if you will come forward, state your name and address, sir. You will have five minutes.
Hello, everybody. My name is Merle Rutledge. I'm not giving out my address. Hello, everybody. My name is Merrell Rutledge. I'm not giving out my address. After last week, I did a lot of soul-searching and reflection, and it's sad when citizens cannot speak their mind. And the very government that we go to every single day decides on what views should we hear or how we should decide the information that we are given. Great leadership understands that truth is never a tack. It's sometimes what you need to hear so you don't make the decisions that will cause everybody around you to suffer because of ego. Furtorance of those who silence the truth is the most dangerous thing ever heard of to mankind and to those who hope to solve the problems of their ills that come from mankind. When truth bothers you to the point that you read and understand that something is hurting you with conviction, that's the truth you need to hear. Last week was disgraceful for any leader, and those who watch will happen. As we decide the most pivotal issues of our time, and this city is no different than those around the country that are suffering and dying from the lack of leadership that recognizes that people are being taken for granted. I'm not worried about the person who yells and screams. I worry about the lion that is silent and is ready to strike. What we do now reflects a generation that is watching every single day whether we have the right to be expressive, be ourselves, be who we want to be. See, the illness is the cancer of those who decide to put that type of shot or jab into their arm, and it leaks into their soul and spirit. Let's be ladies and gentlemen, let's talk. When I had an issue with one side or the other, I may have had my opinion. Now, I'll go back and research and vice versa, and then I ask for some mediator to come in and say, you know what, who's right or wrong. Now, that person may say, I'm wrong. I'm going on it. That's leadership. And what you do is become better for that moment. You don't let one day of failure become your legacy of success. We will not ever be measured if you want to continue Dr. King's dream by what you call your race or your gender, instead of your content of your character. Leadership deserves better in the United States of America, and that doesn't change for a state government or local government. Any government that decides to stop knowledge is stopping their own power. The weakness is not of the people. The weakness is of its leaders. America has been crying now. Virginia's been crying now. They've been silent. There's no censorship for how you move forward. You want to be the best. You want the city to be the best. You're going to strive to hear the voices of the best. Greatness doesn't mind criticism. It loves it. Because right now, this council looks a lot differently than what it used to. After a while, it's not going to be about white or black people. The blood on the streets right now is green, and hopefully you're not too greedy that your own ego is the voice that you hear, because the death is a thousand times harder when the silence is underlying with their lights dim. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. And that concludes our speakers for the evening. If there is not any other business to conduct for this body, seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. Drive safe.